Alright, be resolved that the closed meeting be ended. So that we may commence the regular meeting of Town Council, seconded by Councillor Bellinlet. All those in favour, thank you. I believe that Monique is scheduled to come back very soon. I believe that you have a few resolutions to deal with, Mr Mayor. Yes, there are resolutions, three that we can deal with. Well, I see two that we can deal with immediately. If I rely on the e-scribe documents before us... Go ahead then, Councillor Zant. Yes, and be resolved, Mr Mayor, that we hire Mr Yverwa as of 7th of May in his capacity as a full-time bylaw enforcement officer, and that he be subject to a six-month probationary period, and that his salary be fixed at Class 5, Level 3 of the non-unionised workers' grid... Or salary workers... Or workers' grid, the salary basically, yes. Yes, that's fine, that's fine. We need someone to second this particular resolution, right? And all the right people are here now, right? Seconded by Councillor Bellinlet, all those in favour, great. Also be it resolved that Town Council accept Paul La Chance as of the 23rd of April 2018 as a full-time bylaw enforcement officer, and that this individual be subject to a probationary period for six months. And be it resolved that Mr La Chance's salary be pegged at Level 1, Class 2 of the unionised employee's salary grid. Seconded by Councillor Simard, thank you very much. Announcement, does anyone have any announcements? Yes. I'd like to make everyone aware that the Ministry of Immigration, at present, well each and every year, through the Government of Ontario, honours three youngsters for their exemplary leadership to eradicate discrimination through the Lincoln-Alexander Award. And those winning the award will receive a $5,000 prize, as well as certificate. And candidates' names can be submitted to the Ontario Government. And the student community is of course open to nominations. We can also post this particular competition on the town's website. We can hand the proper paperwork over to Mrs Simard. The Joy Club in St. Pascal is organising a walk to raise awareness for mental health. Departure time at Park Simon in Rockland. So the Club Joy from St. Pascal is organising a walk on May 5th at 10:30, departing from Simon Park. Well, that's fine then. Thank you. Fine, Councillor Lalande. Mr Mayor, this coming Friday, Saturday and Sunday, an exhibition will be hosted by the CIH Arena people. Now, we'll have the Mayor's breakfast hosted by Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber of Commerce and local merchants. The official opening is on Friday evening, and things kick off on Friday evening. Everyone's invited, yes? Other announcements, that's fine then? Alright, let's go on to question period. If anyone has any questions of Town Council, now's the time. Step up to the mic and give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Rhoda LaBonté. I'm just wondering what's going to happen with the ditch now. Now, two years straight now, Mr Mayor, and you saw what happened last year. There was never any water in this hole leading to the sump pump. I dug this hole to service a sump pump in that house, but it never served any purpose, it always remained dry. You saw the pipe leading into the ditch, it's full of sand. What are you, are you waiting to have water in the basement, to rise up? We invited you to attend Town Hall two weeks ago. You asked me to meet up with an engineer. I told you, when we'll get there to perform the work, we'll discuss with you there and then what's going to happen. I don't have any further answers. You had engineers waiting for you at 10am on a Thursday morning, and you did not show up. Sir, the engineer that was there was not the one that drew up the initial plans. Why did you draw up plans by an engineer? You hired an engineering firm, and then you're hiring the town's engineer. Well, the town's engineer knows how plans work out, I also know that. Well, when we get to your place, Mr LaBonté, we'll settle matters. Well, what's he going to explain on the plan? Did you see what has on the plan? I'm not the engineer, but you know how to read a plan, don't you? Yes? And you'd ask that the engineer be in attendance? I did not ask for the engineer, sir. I asked what was going to be done to repair the matter. Well, when we work on the ditch, we'll work on this also. Well, will we be warned in advance before you show up? Or you're going to do things behind everybody's backs, as you do? Sir, we're going to warn him before we go? Yes, it's official. Well, when we had Mrs Simard show up, when I'd gone there the day before, Mr Roussel had met the other owner, and the next day he meets up with us. And we attended a meeting, he had me leave my home, as well as Mrs Roussel. And the next morning, there were some engineers in attendance, and we said clearly that nobody was going to touch anything before I received answers. And the next day, he was sending engineers. Is the union protecting Mr Roussel? Just ask the union if they're going to pay for the time we lose getting there. Sir, we'll meet you there when the work is performed. Well, I just want to know what's going to be done before you show up. Sir, our intent was to show you what was going to be done at Town Hall, at the meeting that we tentatively organised with you there, and you never showed up. You told me to go and consult an engineer, and that's not even the proper engineer. Well, that's what I told you. Ah, that's what you tell me, just show me the documents that I need. Why? Set up a meeting, you never showed up. Well, bring the necessary documents at the next meeting, is that too hard? Too much of a request to ask? Sir, we're not here to litigate your case here. Well, bring me the documents I need, we'll see you when we get there, Mr LaBonté. Just watch out what you do, because if water rises down in the basement, it's my daughter's insurance company that's going to go against you. Totally in agreement with you, Mr LaBonté. And I'm accusing you, you know. Yes, Mr LaBonté, you saw what was going on, yes, sir. It's a really crooked system we have in place, yes, Mr LaBonté. No problem, Mr Dejardin. Thank you, Mr LaBonté, it's always a pleasure. Oh, yes, a pleasure for me too, Mr Mayor. Anyone else having any questions? Your name, Ariel Fillion? 1075 Avenue du Parc, that's sufficient. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Well, the Knights of Columbus here in Rockland are organising a golf tournament, and proceeds will be earmarked to help out our thrift store and our food bank here in Rockland. Now, the golf tournament will be held on the 9th, 9th of June. And I'm here to invite you, I'm giving you an invitation. I'm handing you an invitation, I'm asking you to take part in this golf tournament. You're too good for us, Mr Fillion, you know how I love playing golf. Well, you know, Mr Mayor, you'll really enjoy your day, because apparently the temperature will be certainly much more enjoyable than the one that we have today. As long as you don't pair me up with the two Lalande councillors, because, you know, they were winding up in the trees, either on one side or the other of the fairway, you know. Mr Mayor, we're all, we kept our drive straight. Ah, you know, that's, you have members of your Town Council that like to throw challenges out, and we're ready to take up the challenge given to us, or handed to us by any one of your team. Any one member of your team, we might ask Mr Grimal to take part in the challenge. Alright, well, can I leave my documents with Mrs Collier? Yes, and certainly you'll follow up with this, won't you, Mrs Collier? Yes, yes, of course, thank you, Mr Fillion, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to address council? Yes, good evening, ma'am. Good evening, Mr Mayor. Catherine Pogge, 1546 Royal Road. I'm here in my capacity as past president of ODMAS. Now I'm a secretary of the ODMAS, which is the organisation that trains service dogs for combat veterans that suffer from PTSD and other related problems, and they're anxious to know what's going on with changes to be made to the bylaw that possibly, that ought to allow at least changes to be brought to the existing bylaw to recognise, that would recognise service dogs as medical instruments exempt from legal restrictions imposed on company animals.
Yes, the city of Toronto, Mr Mayor, is already in the processes of revising these exceptions, and will issue permits for service dogs. Recognise them, recognising them as... Giving them a special status. Well, it's a pressing matter, Mr Mayor, because we have at least one citizen that is, that does contravene the existing statutes, and we'd like to correct the situation. This week, we'll be training dogs, and there are many puppies that need to be trained in those families that already have similar dogs, and we wouldn't want to encounter any problems, especially those families in Rockland that want to take in a dog to have it trained as a service dog. Well, the next meeting, I believe, is May the 7th, is it not? Yes. So, a measure is going to be implemented at that particular meeting. Thank you then. Any other questions or comments that you might have?
Good evening, Mr Mayor and Town councillors. My name is Iliane Amiette-Goo, 2664 Bouvier Street, and I'm here to... Well, I believe that last time when we attended the meeting, Town Council, you talked about daycare fees that would increase, and you stated that you'd come up with a solution a month from then to counter the rapid increase of fees with regards to daycare centres. Just to give you an idea as to what we're called upon to pay, you know, I know when we're talking about 11% worth of increase, and when we say that it starts off from $45 to $50, and it's only a $50 difference, but I'll give you an overview as to what my family situation is. I have a family of four children. Two of my girls attend toddler and kindergarten. I was paying about $500 around January, and I'm giving you rounded amounts because of pro rata, that's what's, that's in effect. So around the month of January, I was paying $1,500, thereabouts. And because of the increase, this amount increased by some $300 per month. So, $1,800 all in all since then. And now, you're talking about another increase to the tune of 11%, which would tack on $200 per month additionally to what I'm already paid. Now, since January, that would amount to a $500 increase per month since January. So, what I find difficult to, in all of this, is that there are too many raises thrown our way in too little a time. I know there's a deficit that's been incurred with the running of our daycare centres, but something has to be done, but I wanted you to be aware of the situation. I hear you quite well, ma'am. I believe that everyone has had children or grandchildren in attendance at the daycare centres, I sympathise with you, ma'am. Mr Mayor, I'm talking to you about what I'm living through, but I'll, so I'm representing those friends that are with me, and many others that are not in attendance, because they don't have any electricity in St. Pascal tonight. So, it's not as if I'm only talking, or relating to you my plight. I'm relating the plight of many others that are not in attendance tonight, because they can't be here. Thank you. Good evening, Annick Lalande, from Hammond, 252 Deviolet Street. I live in my father's project, Jamak Lalande in Hammond, and my daughter and my son also make use of the daycare facilities services now. So, I'm the one that has a child that has reduced mobility. Now, just take your time, ma'am. I liked the lady's presentation, the one that alluded to service dogs, and that really touched my heart. So, I have a child that has reduced mobility, and that causes us... That brings about a lot of challenges when we're... When you're talking about increasing fees, it's difficult for regular families that have, that are called upon to pay a certain amount of fees, but I had the opportunity to send my child to a normal daycare centre. But now, all of those detours that I need to make each and every day, Mr Mayor, to ensure that my child can live much like any other children. Not too many of you know what I, as a parent, is living through. I don't cry in front of my daughter, I don't dare do so. I raise my child, I lift her up when the lift does not, lift mechanism does not function. I push my child along, negotiating all the bumps that are on those sidewalks that are not built in a straight line, or in schoolyards that are full of holes or bumps that are not adapted, that are not built to cater to the needs of my child. I lift my child as, and her chair, or her walker, so that she may be able to play in the gymnasium along with others, because the Saint-Matieu School daycare centre is not adapted to meet her needs. For the past two years, Mr Mayor, I've been lobbying the school board. I'd sent a letter about two years ago. Pierre had been CC'd in that letter, because I did not know what to do. I was told, change daycare centres. I was told, go and live in the big city, in Ottawa, you'll have better services there. I'm a girl from Hammond, my father is a man from Hammond. My great-grandfather and my grandfather are both from Hammond, and I live and stay in Hammond. If we are to incur increases with regards to fees, be they daycare-related or others, services offered ought to be adequate and on par with those offered in the city. And I'm speaking on behalf of parents that have children with limited mobility. With regard to this, Rockland has still quite a ways to go. I've asked on many occasions to make changes to the schoolyard. That part of the schoolyard that is used by the toddlers. I'd asked, I'd put pressure to have accessibility ramps to be put in, so that Mackenzie, my daughter, may use the entrance and the exits of that particular establishment. I would have liked to be in attendance last month, but I was at home with my two children then. We're dealing with increases, I'd like to know what solutions are contemplated to help us out, and to help us avoid these increased amounts that add on to our financial burden. Mackenzie needs to receive treatments given to her at CHIO or the United States, because there are no services available to my daughter here in Canada. I pay an enormous amount of money for her to receive these treatments, and I cannot allow myself, Mr Mayor, to pay an increase in daycare centres in such a short span of time. We're living with a tight budget, we do the best we can. I can calculate all of those days that I paid to the city of Rockland. The city of Rockland where Mackenzie did not attend the daycare centre, because she had to attend hospital facilities to receive services. Now, I'd like to hear what solutions you're proposing us tonight. You were supposed to come up with a plan that would help us in making do with lower fees. We're dealing with this tonight. Let me tell you this, Mr Mayor, there's something missing in the recipe that ensures that services are offered to children, and these services should be inclusive for all children. Well, with regards to the Saint-Matieu School, we'll try to exert more pressure upon the school board, because the handicap ramps and all other installations are taken care of by the school board, yes, indeed. And I sent them another email on Friday morning, Mr Mayor. The school board is indeed responsible for the installation of this equipment. People know quite well that Mackenzie attends this establishment, this school. Do we have any news with regard to this? You may remain, ma'am, I'm just going to ask him and to give us an update as to this. Yes, Mr Mayor, I met with those responsible last week at the school board to talk about those points that were raised by parents at the last meeting. And Jose needs to consult with the CSCDEO again. I've approached the United Counties of the, again approached the United Counties of Prescott-Russell to try and obtain help with regards to things that had been asked, you know, accessible toilets and schoolyards that are adapted to special needs. We've been, yes, we've been requesting this for many, many years, have we not? There's a school trustee, Mr Lemay, I believe, who's in charge of all of this, and ask him what's going on, and put a bit of pressure on him. Well, the first steps were taken maybe a year, a year and a half ago. A year and a half ago, Mr Mayor. So there's no reason for this to drag on. This debate ought not to be had with the city of Clarence and Rockland. However, however, we're in the hands of the school board as far as this goes, Mr Mayor. Even the facilities that need to be adapted, and we've implemented the procedures that lead, that ought to lead for something to be done. Well, tomorrow, our intent is to phone the social services, the United Counties' social services, to do something. And usually, they respond quite well, and so we'll see what kind of results our efforts will yield tomorrow. This has been dragging on for two years, there's no reason for it. I do understand, I sympathise with you, ma'am. I understand what you're living through. If there's anything else, don't hesitate to call me, extension 2245 at Town Hall. If I'm not mistaken, I spoke to Mr Lemay when this good lady came to see me at the very beginning, and I, my impression was that steps had been taken. But from what I'm, from what I hear tonight, nothing's been done with regards to the school board. Well, they allowed me to put in the lift on school premises, in the school, that was done. But you see, what happens is this, those people that work there don't, don't have in mind, or don't, are not cognisant of those small, those little things that make life easier. And it's marvellous for a three-year-old child, it's marvellous to see a three-year-old child go up the steps along with her lift on her own, this is great. But they're all, they're smaller things that need to be looked at. For example, this morning, when I push on the automatic button that allows the door to open, that door jams, and we've been complaining about this now for, on many occasions. This is the door leading to the daycare centre, Mr Mayor. Logan follows my young child, as well as my daughter, and if that door closes and hits one of my children, if Mackenzie is already restricted in her mobility, she runs a greater risk of being hurt, you see? One needs to consult experts or those that lived through this. They did something worthwhile, fine, but now, we're at a crossroads whereby Mackenzie has to change rooms, and they've known that for quite a while. And upon changing rooms or environments, they have to put in further infrastructure to cater to her needs, and it's like, you know, as far as they're concerned, nothing... We have to start at zero again. There was a great start to everything, but now, we're back to square one, you know? I've reached my limit, and I have a heavy burden to carry, Mr Mayor. As I told you, the increase needs to bring about quality services offered to our children. And we'll try and help you carry the torch, man, with all of this. Councillor Lalande, Mrs Lalande, I'm part of the Accessibility Advisory Committee here, along with Mrs Wallett, our town clerk. There's, we're part of a committee that meets quite often, and they opened our eyes, Monique and my eyes, on the city of Clarence and Rockland's infrastructures that do exist and don't meet entirely the needs of handicapped individuals. Now, there's a challenge to be met here at the city of Clarence and Rockland level. We luckily have a committee that helps us to implement corrective measures. Does the school board have a similar type committee? I do not know, but given the 2025 Act that's going to be enacted to cater to the needs of handicapped individuals, they'll have no other charge but to step up efforts to meet the needs of everyone. In your case, it's difficult, because you live the situation each and every day. We do our best, you know, it's not easy, you know, I know that, ma'am. So that's... So, the idea behind all of this is to offer inclusive services. This, of course, brings about a certain cost, yes. Well, that's a challenge we're called upon to meet, but from a municipal or business standpoint, this is not a new phenomenon, but it's new for those individuals that are called upon to take decisions that will influence the situation. I do have your pamphlet at home. I haven't had the chance to take part in the dealings of your committee, however. Mr Boucher, the, does the Ministry, the Employment, the Ministry of Employment, do they know what needs to be done? Yes, well, they're the ones that issue us a working licence now. However, are, is there any funding available for this? Well, we can request the United Counties of Prescott and Russell to give us a certain amount of money for this purpose. Yes, we can go through the United Counties of Prescott and Russell, but I believe that the, that the early childhood ministry has funds for this. But there's still the same constraints, even if we do have the money in hand, we have to go to the school board. It's an ambiguous situation what I'm proposing, Mr Mayor, and Mrs Morris is quite aware of this situation from top to bottom. If you'd care to meet with her before, you know, taking additional steps, she might make you aware of any highlights with regards to discussions that have been had up to now, to accelerate the process, to speed up the process. You don't have objection, Mr Boucher, for this lady to visit the area that we're alluding to? Well, it's a public area. However, when we set foot in a school, we have to make sure that the school principal is advised. Well, that's fine. Anyone else have any other questions? No, it's fine, let's go on now. Members' items? None? Let's go on now to consent items. Are there any consent items you'd like to... Are there any consent items you'd like to remove? Yes, 10.3E and 10.3F that I'd like to remove for now for further consideration. Anything else? Councilor Levaire, would you care to read all of this? That's before you. Be it resolved. I'm always the one caught reading the longer resolutions there. That's because you're good at it. Be it resolved that the following items, as identified under the heading Consent Items, appearing on the regular meeting of the 17th of April 2018 agenda be adopted. 10.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings of the regular meeting of April 4, 2018, and minutes of the Committee of the Hall of April 4, 2018. Item 10.2, receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. A, Planning Committee of February 7, Committee of Adjustment of January 24, and Committee of Adjustment of February 28. All right. Item 10.3, the following recommendations from the Committee of the Hall of April 4, 2018. Sub-A, Resolutions from the Champlain Township regarding the FPPA Regulations, Firefighter Certification, and Item Sub-B, Resolution to Refuse a Complete Reimbursement of Application Fees for a Zoning Bylaw Amendment. Sub-C, Resolution to Adopt the 2018-2022 Multi-Year Accessibility Plan and Policy ADM 2018-02, Accessible Customer Service Policy, and Sub-D, Resolution to Accept the Request from the Aliskal Badminton Club, should I say, to be recognized as a nonprofit organization. Thank you, Councilor Levaire. Item 10.4, thank you, Mr. Levaire. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun there. 10.4, Adoption of the Salaries Paid from February 25, 2018 to March 24, 2018 in the gross amount of $942.585 and $682,533.48, seconded by Councilor Simar. All those in favor, thank you. Mr. Lallande, you asked that item 10.3 Sub-E be removed, whereas the municipality has to remit each and every year to the municipal council financial statements with regards to development charges and reserve funds created in keeping with the Development Charges Act. Be it resolved that Town Council accept the statement of accounts with regards to Development Charges Reserve Fund as reflected in the FIN Report 2018-11. It's unfortunate that I couldn't come up with my original of this, but thank you for handing me a copy because I had a lot of notes with regards to this development charge reserve fund matter. Now, up to now, Mr. Mayor, and I've taken a close look at this now, with regards to the year that we had $2,436,026.30 with regards to reserve fund charges, but we only have approximately $1 million in reserve as of December 31st. Is this a true statement? Well, Mr. Mayor, if you care to take a look at Section 5 in this particular report, you'll readily notice a schedule that gives you a summary. So we're talking about $2,912,824 applicable to the Development Charges Reserve Fund. The income perceived during the year was $724,791, interest of $37,300 for a total of $2,552,91 for income that was perceived and received from interests. Projects financed was $1,482,000 and all projects are listed in Appendix B of the documents. You can take a look at all projects there that are listed. So the balance is $3,982,946 as of the end of December. So we're not talking about $1,670,000. No, it was $3,492,000. Thank you, that's what I wanted to determine. All those in favor then carried. Let's go on now to item Sub-F that you wish to remove, Councilor Lallande. Councilor Lallande will read this also. Resolution, be it resolved that Council accept the Jean-Marc Lallande Arena Reorganization Concept Plan as reflected in Report LOI 2018-04-03, and be it resolved that Council mandate community services to proceed to drawing of plans and specifications for the revamping project with regards to the Jean-Marc Lallande Arena in keeping with the, with Report LOI- 030, 0403 as recommended. Questions? Mr. Mayor, I read this report from top to bottom and even then more than once and took a look at a report that was drawn out. We hired CERA Planning and Management and what we're recommending here today completely goes against the report that was issued by this company to whom we paid out $70,000 and that we're not following their recommendations stemming from the said report. Now, it was akin to saying, for example, if Council was saying, let's close the hall up on top of the Clarence Creek Arena, I would say, well, I'm absolutely against this and the same rule applies here in this particular instance. The report stated clearly that this room remained, that this facility remained open and that we generate enough expenses that would allow us to rent it out properly. Now, I take a look at page 57. Let me read the contents of page 57 to you. It's in English, of course. Local school boards have approached the city indicating that the required additional gymnasium space to accommodate physical activity classes in the context of growing enrollment the Jean-Marc Lallande Arena is close approximately to four local schools and as such is well positioned to function as an additional gymnasium facility for all schools. But after that, the other paragraph states.
...focal point within their respective communities that serve important civic and social function. The facilities are currently underutilized. Maintenance issue at the Clarence Creek and Jean-Marc Lallande Community Room should be prioritized, priority, to ensure that these facilities continue to function to full, to their full potential. Monsieur Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, after having taken a look at the document and it states that when the report is presented to Council, we need to hold a public meeting. Now, I've taken a look at what's happened and we've never held a public meeting, given all the facilities at our disposal. I attended this facility this weekend. There's always something ongoing at the arena and we're talking about reducing ice rink availability to cater to the needs of the garage and to, you know, run a garage, smack it up in the middle is not a workable solution. I took a picture of the other garage down at the other end. There's a big gasoline tank there, all types of objects that block access and egress from there or into there. And the room up on top of that facility, there are no other similar type rooms in Rockland. People at church on Sunday say, well, what's going on at the arena today? It's full of cars there. And I attended there, there were a bunch of activities ongoing down on the first floor, but when I go upstairs and it corresponds to what the public told me, there's nothing for teenagers. There were some youngsters from 10 to 14 that were taking part in dance practice of sort. So no one attends the other arena. So I'm asking at this point in time, Mr. Mayor, to give all members of Town Council to read this report and to bring this back for final implementation at the next meeting, the meeting of the 21st, because the second meeting will be held on the 21st, which is Victoria Day. Well, so on Wednesday, the 23rd, to give us a chance at least to host a public meeting. At present, there was a group of 40 and now there are 70 that play pickleball, six courts worth of, and now they want to take up three additional courts. It's going to take up the whole ice rink and now there's going to be ball hockey starting up on 120-foot surface. Let me play the devil's advocate here. I know they, they came into arrangements, they entered into arrangements with those associations and I believe, Mr. Jubéville, you're the one that took care of this? Yes, groups were consulted and most of them stated that a 125-feet surface, as mentioned by Mr. Lallande, would be sufficient to practice the sport they wish to practice. Now, to further what Mr. Lallande has stated, Rockland has no community center. This building serves a dual purpose as our community center and it would, there would be a greater advantage if it had a kitchen facility attached to it. I know our municipal garage dilemma and what role it plays in all of this. We don't have money to, that would allow us to build a further community center. I would think of doing the same thing that Hoxbury did with its ice rink surface. Instead of turning it into a garage facility, they removed benches and they built facilities, something to bring things, kids in. I know that my son takes part in activities with regards to a hockey team, ball hockey team, and they had their party upstairs, you know. Youngsters were going upstairs, eating a pizza slice and then going downstairs and continuing to play ball hockey. It's unfortunate to lose garage facilities, of course, but there's a wide, there's a big parking lot facility, but I know there are problems to all of this. Maybe we can resort to brainstorming here, to a bit of a brainstorming session and to see what we can do with the Jean-Marc Lallande Arena. We might convert it into a community center and rename it the Jean-Marc Lallande Community Center. Now, of course, the 23rd of May, is that too late for the grant we're trying to obtain concerning this? I can, I can say something else to, I can address this grant situation. I attended the meeting with regards to the grant. The grant is given to prepare plans and specifications. This is an application we'll bring forward, of course. At present, we're saying, well, we're going to put in a garage and up on top we'll put in the food bank. When we're talking about moving the food bank upstairs, they'll have the same surface as they have where they are at present, same floor space. All of the money that will be put in to accommodate food bank needs is going to cost us about $450,000 to $500,000. Mr. Boucher? Well, firstly, I'm concerned by those comments. Mr. Lallande is right, but this study was conducted, was commissioned in 2015 and was implemented in 2016 and reflects the reality as it stood three years ago. I don't want to enter into any debate with regards to a potential community center. Now, with regard to what has been mentioned concerning the grant, we can delay, you know, the steps to be taken, we can delay matters and still be eligible for the grant given out by the province, as long as Town Council approves the process. Yes, we can come up with a report for you as of May the 7th. Well, Mr. Boucher, can I tell you, can I ask you this? The study was commissioned in 2015 and was implemented in 2016, but a study similar to this does not have an expiry date. It's a concept idea, so we can still make use of this, the contents of this study two years down the line. Well, let me tell you that we have statistics in hand that prove that we can't make use of all of those recommendations set out in 2016, in 2018. And if you adopt the concept that was advanced at that time, you'll have to resort to major investments in the very near future. What we proposed was the following. We invested in only one venue to maximize income and activities within that venue. But if Council wishes for us to keep both venues, we'll eventually be called upon to invest in both of those establishments because they don't cater to our current needs at present. Well, you'll agree with me, there's, there aren't all that many things to do here in Rockland and I'm not arguing with you. I'd like us to keep something that's pre-existing instead of, you know, tearing it down and putting in a garage facility. The reality that lies behind my comments is that if we conserve both buildings, let's expect to invest in both of those buildings. And the other idea that was bantered about is this, the food bank. Let's take a look at what happened in Bourget. They built their own building and the Council there guaranteed the loan. The loan was repaid by Le Partage, the commission overseeing the food bank there. Now, are we going to say to the thrift store people, we'll support you in a loan, you'll purchase the building and then you'll repay the loan, acting basically as a makeshift banker? I know sometimes it's not possible.
A building like this one in center town, you don't just turn it into a garage. I understand.
If we're talking about a community center, it's the only community center in the area. Recently, we talked about the Clarence Creek Arena that remained empty. Why can't we do this with our community center here in Rockland? There's more citizens in Rockland that would make use of facilities offered by community center. We're always making use of this building at present. Well, Council is called upon to decide upon this. Mr. Boucher comes up with a suggestion and he states, say, if we sold, we sell off the other building and we keep this one, we'll save money. But if we keep both buildings, no problem, no problem there, but we'll have money to spend with, to revamp both buildings. You know, it's always prudent to keep money. You don't want to sell it because the city will grow.
Way more expensive price.
Totally in agreement. It was mentioned in previous years. I was against this principle then and look where we are here today. Let's not forget that this arena has had no missions. The Jean-Marc Lallande Arena has had no precise mission to adhere to since 2011 and they have ever-growing needs with regards to the municipal garage people. Even if we decide not to invest anything, we'll still have to invest, you know, to ensure a healthy and safe environment for this building that we have on Chamberlain Street. And it's very crowded because of the help center that's there. People need to park on the street and it's very crowded, very dangerous. Families get there with their children. It's easy, you know, to lose sight of a child who will run freely into the road, into traffic. So it's a thorny situation for town employees, for the community center and for the help center also. The help center people are favorable to any change to be brought about there. They'll be much more centrally located and given the parking facility at the Jean-Marc Lallande Arena, well, the safety aspect is ever-present, is ever-important. Mr. Mayor is alluding to investments. We're talking about major investments, a million dollars plus. Now, we've been working through four budgets in the past and let me tell you that we don't have millions of dollars to throw away. Well, you know, at a certain point in time, someone is, might come up and say enough is enough and we'll have to tear it down. It's important to have an arena along with community center that is rented out quite often and the reason why people don't rent out the upstairs room at the Jean-Marc Lallande Arena is that... Arena is that there has been no renovation brought to it for the past 15 years now. Well, that's what we're proposing, given the existing project right now. Well, the project caters to the needs of the thrift store and the food bank, and we're cutting down on the available ice rink service for community center use. But what I'm saying is that there are other available space in the city of Rockland. Well, let's have the thrift store and the food bank people look for other options, and we'll take a look at further options for a garage. Council Belleguet?
I wasn't even aware there was another report, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I know there was one, once the matter was brought up. I'd like to take a look at both reports, Mr. Mayor. Can we not have a copy of both of those reports? We can hand you all of those reports, copies of those reports, as long as they're read through, Mr. Mayor. We've been alluding to those on many occasions in the past. If you wish, we can send it to you, all of the available documents with regards to this, but you need to take a decision in the very near future. All of those documents were ratified by Council. What I'd like to propose, Mr. Mayor, is that we read through those. We have a lot of on our plate, because you'll have to, you'll be called upon to finish late, and call for an exception with regards to a 10:30 finish time. I've asked Mrs. Willette to scan the necessary documents and put those on, on the eScribe system. Well, fine, so why don't, why can't we just defer this resolution? I think though that we can still go forward with the grant request, can we not? Well, we certainly could, but in the meantime, we can issue another report. So let's defer this report moved by Council Lallon. I'd just like to raise some concerns as to this. When we're talking about investing, we ought to have invested a long time ago, as was previously mentioned here. People can't hold banquet, because there are no kitchen facilities, there are no coolers, they've removed everything. The town is growing, and rightly so. When it was initially built, we had five or six thousand population. Rockland alone is up to 15,000 in population, and we're told that youngsters face a dangerous situation when they cross the street at that area. But when, when I thought about this this afternoon, when youngsters go shopping at Walmart at the Independent, they have to walk through parking there. They're not, you know, they're not let off at the door, yeah, you know. And when we're talking about repairs, whatever type of repairs we're dealing with there, the roof needs to be repaired. It has been leaking for years, it needs to be repaired. Now, the red program, I recall when we applied to obtain $465,000 to repair, to improve the park down at the bottom, and this amount was transferred over to the Optimist's Hall to revamp that hall, instead of performing necessary work at the park. And also, I was quite surprised, Mr. Mayor, when I measured the circumference of the building. At present, the Santide Food Bank has 4,000 square feet at its disposable, and if we move that operation upstairs at the arena complex, they'll have the same square footage to work with. I was surprised to hear volunteers say to me, "Mr. Lallon, we don't want to move from there." Well, Miss Council Lallon, we, let me tell you that I, we received a letter stating the opposite. Well, I saw the mayor. I told you who drafted the letter, and his wife is in attendance, she's the one that drafted the letter, and they told me quite squarely that they didn't want to move from where they are now. So, do you want all of the documentation that's required to obtain the grant? Well, the, the grant will kick in regardless. This documentation deals with the preparation of plans and specifications. So, we're dealing with the grant at present, and on the 23rd of May, we'll be taking a final decision, and it'll give us a chance to convene a public meeting. Fine, all those in favor, carried, that's fine. Thank you. It's fine, all right, is everything okay? Okay then, that's fine. I'm sorry. Let's, let's go on to the daycare center matter, shall we? 11.4, so, let's go on to item 11.4, the daycare center matter for the three ladies at the back. Council Levaire, do I read both motions? 11.4, the first directive. Whereas, Council at its regular meeting on March 21st, 2018, requested that staff prepare additional options that may be considered before proceeding with the adoption of the daycare fees increase as proposed in report number LOI 2018-03-02. Be it resolved in report number LOI 2018-04-04 be received as information. Seconded by Council Zant. Any questions? Council Zant? Well, firstly, Mr. Boucher, a very nice outlay or snapshot of projected costs. Thank you. And it's important to understand the message that was given to us by citizens in attendance here tonight, but it's important to consider that we need to resort to a certain type of increase. All services, such as public transit or arena facilities, everything increases every year. I was in favor. I didn't like the 11% increase, but I understood why there needed to be 11% increase implemented. So, it's impossible to remove the municipal share with regards to public transit and arenas. We have to take a look now in imposing a municipal share in all of this. Well, municipal share, well, counties also have an interest in that, right, Mr. Boucher? Yes, with regards to the province, yes, indeed, Mr. Mayor. Those are funds stemming from the province distributed throughout the United Counties. We do receive a sum of, an amount from counties. However, if we compare the needs of 800 individuals as compared to 300 individuals that make use of public transit, that receive grants to the tune of $1,000 per person, what conclusion can we derive from all of this? Well, we're taking at situations that don't make any sense. What do you mean by that? Look, you cannot compare public transit with daycare centers, and you can't compare daycare centers to arena charges. We're not catering to the same clientele, and we're not... Yes, but he's talking about a service that's offered. He's trying to mix up things, but Michelle, these are two things that are totally different. Firstly, the daycare centers presently, those using those services pay 75% of the costs, associated costs, and 27% stem from home, from everyone, from your income tax. It's financed by the province. Now, that's fact number one. I'm not stating, I'm not saying that daycare centers cost us a lot, quite to the contrary, but everyone's impacted by daycare center fees, be they offer through private services or not. But I do believe that we're not dealing with this at present. We're dealing with the rate of increase that is subject of tremendous leap and bound. I understand much more than you think I understand. But Michelle, you have to take a look at the income tax deduction attached to this, because there are no social programs here in Canada that are as generous from an income tax standpoint than daycare centers. It depends on your salary, of course, Council Lallon. Well, I've consulted Frederic to determine what services parents receive through our daycare centers, and I based those needs on a $40,000 base salary, and the total deduction at the end of the year hovers around the 20% mark. Now, over and above the fact that we are, we receive a covering grant of 27% from the province, there's also this income tax write-off that people request from Revenue Canada at the end of the year. Well, that's fine. We need to offer services to help out our families, and I'm entirely in agreement with this principle. But we have to think this out, to what extent does municipality or municipal entity be required to finance an operation? If we're taking a look at what's going to happen at the next provincial elections, both parties are talking about increasing the share that parents will be called to pay for daycare services. Yes, but that's not a done deal. I know. Council Lallon, you've gone over your allotted time right now. Mr. Mayor, the Liberals promise some things, and Conservatives promise others, and Mrs. Horvath has come up with a different set of promises this week. This particular service is available only if you have children. There are other municipal services, however, such as arenas, play services, hall rentals, public transit, is accessible to everyone, but transportation services, okay? There might be 300 citizens that make use of this, and they receive offsetting grants. The same rule applies to those that play hockey, but take a look at the difference, take a look at the difference. Now, he's, he's at odds with Mrs. Sima. No, look, if you use public transit, or if you make use of baseball field facilities, of course, you, you know, I'm not making use of daycare centers myself, but we're still paying for it, and happily. But if you make use of public transit, you're benefiting from this service, because you're eliminating cars from the road, even if you don't use it. Well, we're getting far from the issue, we're fading away. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to conclude the point that I would have liked to have made and finished, gone through at the beginning. The service offered by the city is a service, is a service, is a servant, be it the arena, public transit, or daycare centers. I always thought that there is a municipal share that should play a role in all of this to allow us this flexibility to say, yes, we need an increase, but it won't be 11%. We need this flexibility afforded to us, and each and every time we deal with the budget through, with regards to public transit, we make use of this flexibility, you know, and we, we agree to a 2.5 increase, 2.5 increase. I'm in agreement with a 2% increase with a municipal share of $190,000 in all of this. Let me allow this small comment. That's the only service called upon to self-finance itself. I'm not even in favor of an increase. What's the, that, let's absorb it this year, and let's take a look at it further at next year's budget. We talked about doing this the last time around. If we state that this is akin to any other services, we'll need to contemplate increases, much like other services, and arenas and public transports, transportation received increase. We've already imposed a tran, an increase with regards to our public transit in January. I believe they've, we've agreed on a 5%, 6%, or 7% increase. Let's absorb the loss this year, but next year annual, let's take a look next year as to the municipal share to be included in all of this. Council Lallon, I'm, I was taking a look at the 11% increase that amounted to $13,750 for one child, and not two. I'm talking about the toddler category here. What are you looking at? Page 322. So, $13,754 for one toddler, and if you have two toddlers, you're up to $27,000 plus increase. That doesn't make sense. Mothers will, can't work anymore, or fathers for that matter. Council Belleguet? Now, we decided to keep the increase of the municipal taxation rate at 2.4% with a balanced daycare budget now. Of course, if we resort to increases, it will remain balanced. If we increase it by some 11%, as suggested by Community Services, we can maintain the increase of 2.8% with regards to the mean average taxation rate. And the municipal taxation rate will be increased by 3.4%. And if we don't increase the daycare services, the tax, taxation rate will increase by some 4%. Well, during the course of the, of a given year, there's always money that will come up. All right. Well, look, if you don't increase any of your daycare centers, it will impact your basic taxation rate, because there's a report here tonight that establishes the tax rates. The budget needs to be balanced. Otherwise, we can't go forward. We, we can't submit our tax report to the government. To state that there's money that's going to fall from the heaven year in and year out is not, is quite improper. Well, Mr. Mayor, I think we'd come up with enough money to pay, you know what I mean. I'm in agreement that 11% is quite a lot, and I understand the plight of those citizens that addressed Town Council, and I'm glad that we, I don't have any children at daycare right now, because it costs a lot. But on the others, on the other hand, on the others, on the other hand, we can't increase the basic tax rate by some $200,000, but we risk managing stuff like this all the time, Mr. Mayor. Now, either we cut somewhere, either we cut somewhere, or we might increase by a particular percentage that would be reasonable. Mr. Keogh? Mr. Mayor, in Appendix 10A, there is a schedule there that sets out the amounts and the hypothetical situation that taxes are increased or not increased. Why can we not increase the municipal share? If we were to fire someone and pay $300,000 in severance, where would we get this money?
Mr. Mayor, whenever you're setting your budget for the year, it must be balanced. You have to have your revenues equal to your expenses. We have a contingency in our budget that's been established. The general contingency is $50,000, but other than that, your budget must be balanced. You must identify your revenues with your expenses. If during the year we have an extraordinary expense that the council's speaking about, then staff will look at what we have in reserves and whether there's money available in reserves to deal with the extraordinary expense. I would argue, Mr. Mayor, that this is not an extraordinary expense, this is an ongoing operating cost. So if you were to, if you were to use a reserve to fund it, you're going to have the same problem occur next year. So you either have to permanently finance it by taxes or by increases in your daycare rates.
If I take a look at other sectors, now, tonight, we'll be shelling out $150,000 for the construction of a culvert. Well, that's borrowed money, that's based on a debt deficit. We're borrowing less to finance the debt, but that still doesn't resolve the situation at hand. If we go to 5%, we have to come up with $126,000 shortfall. But I understand that the 11%, as the lady alluded to, impacts the toddler, the toddlers more than others. Now, if you add 11% onto the $46 per day that's requested... Now, if you add eleven percent onto the forty-six dollars per day that's requested, it's much more of a burden on the parent than if you were to add an additional twenty-five dollars per day. So the percentage for toddlers should be less and the town's share should be the same share as the extracurricular activities being financed. Yeah, but that's not how it works. Funding is not parsed out with, in keeping with categories. Well, he says that let's spread out differences, but let's not impact the toddler category. Now, if we contemplate five percent, we're starting off from forty-five to forty-eight and twenty-five, three dollars, twenty-five cents more per day municipal taxes if they're pegged at five percent, added on to one-point-eight-four. Well, if we increase it by some five percent, it's going to impact the overall tax rate. All governments do have programs that are subject to grants. Otherwise, people wouldn't be able to pay available services. Let me suggest this to you folks, five percent. I still think that's too much. Well, we have to come up with money somewhere to offset the loss. We're ready to come up with a six percent shortfall. Why not, you know, make up an eleven percent instead of a six percent shortfall difference? Well, we've come up with the same conclusion. If you cut services somewhere, then you'll disadvantage another group as opposed to this particular group. So you have to cut in a service somewhere. So if you replace daycare centers by another service, you'll be cutting. Who will attend the next meeting? Well, that group that has been subject to cuts. We've stated that daycare centers don't receive anything from the municipality except that the county share that is given to the daycare centers. Well, we'd come up with a five percent municipal share to offset daycare increases. You're, everybody's complaining about deficits and then you don't want any deficits. Well, you're, we're contemplating eleven percent increase as of January, but it's much better than the seventeen percent originally contemplated. We can come up with it somewhere else. We have to cut somewhere, folks. Don't forget, if you, five percent is still not an equitable increase because they've already had a high rate of increase imposed upon them. When would this increase be implemented? As of the first of July, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, if you adopt this, and if you adopt this timetable, it won't impact the tax rate right now and all of the new contracts will kick in with regards to the running of the daycare centers of the first of June and we'll have to implement those new rates at that time. As I've explained to you on a few occasions, we run the risk of losing a few clients because the increase will be too much for them to handle. There will always be varying conditions governing users of this particular service. Either that or that we make cuts in the department. Well, they're already working bare bones. They don't have money available to come up with extras. They have to pay for the food and we're called upon to pay for the shortfall of money. We'll come up with a solution. Eighty-two percent of the expenditures are salaries paid out to the workers at those daycare centers. That's eighty-two percent of the budget right there. Well, five percent increase, everybody suffers a tad bit and we're called upon to make up the difference. That's how I see it. Yeah. All right. Well, the maximum I'm ready to go to is a two percent, Mr. Mayor, not five. Well, I don't know where you'll come up with the rest. I don't know. I have no idea. Can we not make the effort in this regard? Well, we've made the effort because we've come up with a budget that's conducive to, to a rational, rational tax increase and we're trying to come up with a solution to all of this. Two percent? We can't defer this issue at the next meeting, Mr. Boucher. No, because you have to notify the people properly, those people involved. So you have to come up with a hundred ninety thousand dollars. Are you ready to adopt the two percent, a two percent increase, but you still have to come up with an eight percent shortfall? Mrs. Collier, you'll come up, try and run the municipality like I say, well, my...
We actually pay to go on the missions. What that we do is have an impact. It is the area of the budget where we have money that we haven't spent so far. Obviously salaries, you have commitments to employ, so that would be a difficult area to cut, to cut the actual existing two thousand and eighteen budget. Other areas such as snow clearing where we have contracts to purchase fuel and sand and salt, all those materials would be a very difficult area. Councillor Samard is correct in that the budget for the daycare is extremely tight and it is predominantly salaries, so it would be difficult to cut there. The contribution to the reserve funds would be the area that we'd have to look at and I would ask that if you want to direct us, we could bring a recommendation back to you because we need to look at the capital projects, which ones we're committed to, which ones we could put our hold.
Does that just patch the issue? It doesn't solve...
No, if you reduce your contributions to the reserve fund, then next year we would consider increasing it again or we modify the capital program. It means some capital purchases would be pushed out.
Which means our ten-year plan is all of it.
Correct. Part of it, which...
So you'll have another group other than the daycare center group that will appear in front of Town Council. I know you don't like a five, potential five percent increase, but at least it's a move on our part. Less than the initial increase that was contemplated by council, but still, still. We'd be paying a hundred and twenty-six thousand and the other increase would be a hundred and six thousand dollars. With the adjustment that's proposed, that solves the problem for this year and next year? Or do people expect another increase next year, given the study that was commissioned? The eleven percent would cover next year's share also. However, the two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar figure that you see there covers six months' worth of operations. So we'll be obtaining four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars next year because we're talking about a full year's operation and this four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars would take care of the whole gamut of services offered. So by taking action tonight, we'll also resolve the two thousand, we'll also resolve the two thousand and nineteen situation. Yes, if you take action tonight. The eleven percent plus a six percent in January. The eleven percent, I agree with you, the eleven percent is too much, but at five percent, look, gives everyone a chance. I know that you stated that we have to come up with a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars shortfall however, for a six-month period. See if we can, you know, dip into our reserve fund or cut somewhere else. This will also impact salary-wise, other departments. We can cut down a salary. Instead of hiring someone immediately, let's wait a couple of months before hiring an individual. But Jamak, this will not permanently solve your problem. You'll, you'll be following a patchwork scenario year in and year out. I know what you mean, but we hadn't budgeted this beforehand and there was no municipal share discussed, you know, to be paid out, discussed beforehand. Mrs. Horvath runs a daycare business and it only, only charges twelve dollars per year. Well, I, what can I tell you? We're called upon to manage, but we're called upon to manage. How many times were we promises, were we promised the widening of a highway in... I've moved, I've proposed a two percent, you've proposed a five percent increase. I'm going to second the two percent. Well, the resolution that you've tabled was to vote on the report. You'd have to come up with a new resolution, given your directive, please. So I move that we receive the report, moved by Councillor Zant and seconded by Councillor Levaire. That was previously proposed. All those in favor to receive the report? Fine. All right. Mr. Mayor, I would like to move a two percent increase and let's see how many people will jump on this. If not, let's go on to five percent. All those in favor of two percent increase? It seems as if it's going to be a two percent increase. Now, hold on now. We'll have to make up the hundred ninety thousand dollar shortfall somewhere. So it's best two percent increase. Mr. Keogh?
Yes. A hundred ninety, hundred ninety thousand, two hundred eighty-nine.
So, Mr. Mayor, eleven-point-five, the adoption of the tax-related bylaw, I don't know if you want to consider it tonight, but it seems in light of your recent decision that it will be modified because it was tabulated, given an eleven percent increase in daycare fees, I see. Because this item appears as item eleven-point-five at the, on the agenda today. Are there any, is there a negative impact to deferring it to the next meeting? Well, we can discuss it at the next meeting, but that doesn't leave us much time to finalize the final tax rate. So we'll decide this at the next meeting. So the adoption bylaw with regards to final taxes in two thousand and eighteen will be deferred to the seventh of May for final decision. Now, just to clarify matters, the council's intent, the difference missing in between the two percent and the eleven percent proposed increase and the two percent that's been voted upon here tonight. Now, this shortfall, do you want staff to come up with money within their individual budget to offset the monetary shortfall caused? No, no, we're not going to increase the tax rate. We'll come up with cuts to be implemented. So ladies, we've enacted a two percent increase instead of an eleven percent. Even though I appear to have been the devil's advocate tonight, I do understand the problem you raised tonight. My heart's with you really. And we, we voted in favor of your request. Item eleven-point-one, accounts paid...
Seven million, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine and ten cents be adopted as recommended.
Seconded by Councillor Belleguet, that's regard to accounts paid. Questions? All those in favor carried then. Let's go on now to item eleven-point-two, official plan, eleven-point-two. Councillor Levaire, be resolved that council approve the site law draft plan submitted by Latre Engineering with regard to three-seven-two-one-three, Canada Inc., Brazil, B-dash-twelve-dash-one-twenty-one with conditions and conditions set out in report fifteen-dash-eleven-R. And be it also resolved that council adopt bylaw two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-seven being a bylaw to amend the official zoning for the purpose of modifying the designation of part of lot twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, concession one, lot east from lower density residential to weak density residential and residential mid-density and high-density. And be it also resolved that council adopt bylaw two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-eight being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw two thousand and sixteen dash ten for the purpose of modifying the zoning category of the residential urban RU-one to residence, urban residential zone, special urban density, deferred RS-dash-H and R-two-H residential area and R-three-dash-H and parks, and park and green spaces zone as recommended. You see how good you are with all the practice I'm handing you? You've all understood what I was reading, did you not? Yes. Councillor Zant seconded? Yes. All those in favor? Carried then. Thank you. The two thousand and eighteen debenture bylaw, we'll wait upon this or we can defer this. So eleven-point-three then, Mrs. Sima. Be resolved that bylaw two thousand and eighteen dash thirty-four being a bylaw to authorize the borrowing upon amortizing debentures in the principal amount of six-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars and six cents toward the cost of various projects be adopted and further be it resolved that bylaw number two thousand and eighteen dash thirty-five being a bylaw to authorize the borrowing upon amortizing debentures in the principal amount of two million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and six dollars and thirty-three cents toward the cost of various projects be adopted. Seconded by Councillor Levaire. Any questions? All those in favor? All those in favor? Carried then. Well, thank you. We'll skip item eleven-point-five. Bylaws? Are there any bylaws you'd like to withdraw from all of this? Like to withdraw item twelve-point-two for further consideration, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Belleguet, could you please read this for our benefit? Save and accept bylaw twelve that falls under item, the bylaw that falls under item twelve-point-two. Fine. Be resolved that all municipal bylaws be adopted to with twelve-point-one, two thousand and eighteen dash thirty-two to remove the holding zone H symbol and change the zoning category for the lots described as being part of lot twelve, concession three and parts one, two, and three on plan fifty-R-dash-one-zero-six-seven-nine. Twelve-point-three, bylaw two thousand and eighteen dash forty-one to establish retail business establishment hours of operation. Twelve-point-four, bylaw two thousand and eighteen dash forty-two to authorize the signature of an agreement with Arno Construction and Excavation. An excavation? Did I say evacuation, Mr. Mayor? I apologize. Excavation for the replacement of culverts at the intersection of Butler and Lego Roads. Item twelve-point-five, bylaw two thousand and eighteen dash forty-three to authorize the signature of a contract to DRS Construction for the Clarence Creek Arena Community Hall renovation. And item twelve-point-six, bylaw two thousand and eighteen dash forty-five to adopt the terms of reference of the Joint Compliance Audit Committee. Seconded by Councillor Sima. All those in favor? Item twelve-point-two now. Be resolved that bylaw two thousand and eighteen... To establish retail business establishment hours of operation be amended. What we're saying, Mr. Mayor, is that they can take decision now without appearing to, before council. Now, twenty-four-point-six states, an applicant must be a taxi cab driver in the city of Clarence and Rockland for at least two years. You've seen this?
License. To get his own tax...
All right. Yes, I believe that's correct.
An applicant must be a taxi cab driver in the city of Clarence, Rockland for at least two years prior to the date of filing the application and must provide documentary evidence showing employment as a driver in the city of Clarence, Rockland Taxi Cab Industry. The application that we have at the present time, ideal local taxi driver.
I believe so. I don't have that information in front of me. The issue that we ran into was the applicant provided a business plan to us and under an earlier section of the taxi bylaw, the director can approve licenses provided they meet all of the requirements. I was told that they met all of the requirements, but under this section, we had to bring it back to council anyway, so there was a conflict within the bylaw. We're just trying to tidy that up so that there's not a conflict. The information that I have... The information that I have from my staff is that they meet the obligations within the taxi bylaw.
With this bylaw, you don't have to come back to council?
Correct. The idea here is that we'll have the authority to be on the issue.
All right. All those in favor, carry then. Confirmatory bylaw. Let's go on to this one here. Counselor Zant, item 13. Hold on a minute. Be resolved that bylaw 2018-44 be deemed as a confirmatory bylaw for all bylaws enacted at the regular meeting, at the regular meeting of Town Council of the, held on the 17th of April 2018. Seconded by Counselor LaLonde, adjournment called at 9:07.